Welcome to the June 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Venite Hamaphthi. I'll be confirming that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zorko?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
Peggy Sheldon?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the Agenda in Town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q&amp;A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the Agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted Agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar... Oh, man, I just lost this. If you join the webinar...
Star nine.
Star nine to raise your hand. You think I know this down right now. And star six to unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. Nobody. All right. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll move into Select Board announcements, just a couple of announcements tonight. The annual town election will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, June 3rd, at the Long Meadow Community House. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. For additional information, including the sample ballot and voter resources, please visit longmeadowma.gov/elections. And Long Meadows' annual shredding event will be held on Saturday, June 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Long Meadow High School Student Parking Lot. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And with that, we will move into resident comments. Any folks online here for resident comment? No? Okay. All right. Then we will move into Select Board comments. I just have a couple of quick comments. I know that Lynn talks about this in her Town Manager's Report, but just wanted to quickly say that the Memorial Day ceremony was great this year, as it is every year, and just wanted to thank Lena Valturo and Earl Godfrey for all the work that they do in putting that event together. And then also, as mentioned, we have our annual town election tomorrow, and wanted to thank our town clerk, Assistant Town Clerk, and all of our volunteers, police officers, who do such a great job of making sure everything runs smoothly. And, you know, we just did this less than a month ago, and so to be doing it again tomorrow, I know is kind of a strain, and so the town is thankful to everyone involved for their efforts, and want to thank all the candidates for running and wish everyone good luck. Okay. Any other comments? Andrew?
So last week, just to keep everyone informed, I was invited to a session at First Church, and they are planning to initiate a capital campaign in 2026 to help improve and maintain their building. This is obviously a church with its own congregation, but I think everybody would agree that this is a very historically significant building and a very visible structure in our town, and they asked me to raise, help raise awareness of their efforts, and I said I'd be happy to. They're planning to raise about $3 million ideally to help with projects like painting the entire exterior. You can imagine that's a huge job. Upgrading and preparing windows, fixing the ceiling at Bailey Hall, which has had some damage, rehabilitating like an elevator in the building, repairing some flat roof membranes. They are enormously grateful to the town, which in the last town meeting gave over $400,000 to help them with repairing their slate roof using CPC funds, and they also hope to raise hundreds of thousands from grants and their own congregation, of course. But I know that when the time comes, they will appreciate any donations from our community to help keep the church looking beautiful and our town green. And they also want to raise awareness of the many programs and events that occur in the church, like last week's Witness Stone Ceremony, which was fantastic, also AA meetings, the Montessori school, concerts. And I think we can all imagine that historic churches like this are very costly to maintain. There's many examples of churches that fall into disrepair and are abandoned. So I just wanted to bring this everyone's attention, and I encourage anyone who wants to help support their efforts or feels moved to do so next year, please do. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment regarding Memorial Day. Venite did an excellent job, I think, you know, recognizing the Select Board, the town of Long Meadow. Also Lynn, I say this every year, but Lynn makes an effort to always come up, come out and show up to the Memorial Day events, and she did a great job as well. And Lynn, thank you very much for coming. Earl Godfrey, he always does a great job, and Lena as well. So it was very well attended. I feel like every year, we add a little twist to it, it gets better and better, so just a good event. The other event that Andrew mentioned, the Witness Stone event at the First Church, this is the second year that the community put on this event, and it was very, very moving. I know, I saw Andrew there as well. And this year, they recognized two enslaved individuals, and we, the community celebrated their contributions to our community, and I felt like more than ever, especially with recent events that have occurred, you know, in our community, I just thought it was a very special time to have everybody rally around and recognize the contributions of these two individuals. So currently, there's four Witness Stones present, and I urge everybody, you know, if you're with your kids or walking down in front of the church, to take a look and just admire the stones and contributions that all of these individuals made for our community. I think that was it, but thank you.
Great, thanks. Mark?
Yeah, I have a couple things. First of all, for people who don't know, today and tomorrow represent the Jewish holidays of, Jewish holiday of Shavuot. It commemorates the giving of the Ten Commandments on Mount Sinai, which is interesting. And I mention this only because Orthodox Jews will not ride, will not write on the holiday. Those people who live in Long Meadow, and there is quite a number, had made provisions to vote early, and apparently, there was a miscommunication. So I got some notes and calls from people and emails, and I want to thank Mike and Lynn and I guess Tim also in the clerk's office, because apparently whatever the miscommunication was, was taken care of, and everybody felt that they did have a chance to vote and vote at the proper time. And I'm not sure whether it was, like Mike and I talked, whether it was using the wrong terms, absentee versus really voting, or whatever it was, but they've all been, it was all addressed, and it took a lot of coordination. I appreciate that, and they appreciated it particularly as well. I was at the, you know, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's meeting on traffic study, and the Long Meadow L project is, continues to fall, slip a little bit. Lynn mentioned in her monthly report that the advertisement date is June. It's not going to happen in June. Hopefully, it'll happen in July or August or maybe September. They're still hoping to get it advertised in the current fiscal year. And it all has to do with other projects and changes to the federal funding, but nevertheless, the project is going to happen, and I think it's just going to be a little, continues to be a little later than they want it to be, but it will go out to advertisement before the October 1st fiscal year is what they're telling us. Okay, so that's best I can tell you. However, the south half of Route 5, which is Project 12257, it's now 2028 kind of and into 2029. And part of the reason is because the Department of Transportation is pushing all their funds into bridges. Sean, if we can put a couple of bridges in that project, we might get a little bit of work, and there's actually, I shouldn't speak badly, but the town of Chesterfield had a project, and all of a sudden, it now took some culverts and turned them into bridges, and boom, they got funded and got funded with priority. So I don't know what the going is, but it's, that one's going to be a tough go. But just to look at this whole project, there's a whole scenario. There is a capital investment plan meeting for the Planning Commission, Department of Transportation, tomorrow by Zoom. I don't know, Sean, if you got that notice at the DPW, it's tomorrow at 4 o'clock by Zoom, and I think somebody might want to listen in because it might tell us what's going on. I don't know that it will, but it's Department, Mass. Department of Transportation. The Pioneer Valley Transit Authority, I also went to that meeting. They did set a budget for the fiscal year 2026. Their budget is highly dependent upon state aid, what they call regional transit authorities, which is the bus transportation program. There's one taped in the islands, there's Worcester, there's Springfield, there's Berkshire kind of thing. They were level funded, all the money increase for transportation went to the MBTA in Boston. And so PVTA is kind of short a little bit on their funds. They're going to be using some money from their federal funds to balance the budget, but the free fare that they are now is not guaranteed much past October, November. If people are interested or concerned, please write the PVTA, write your congresspeople, whoever it is, to make sure that the PVTA will continue to be fare-free. It has been extraordinarily popular, it has increased ridership tremendously, and it's in danger because of a lack of funding. That's my report.
Thank you. And now we'll move into the Town Manager's Report.
So tonight, I have an update on the middle school project. The preferred schematic design was submitted to MSBA on May 1st. The MSBA Board of Directors is scheduled to vote on the town's submission on June 18th. From the date of that vote, the town then has 120 days to secure funding for the project. The 120-day deadline brings us to October 16th. And just as a reminder, the special town meeting on the borrowing authorization is scheduled for September 8th, and the ballot question on the debt exclusion is scheduled for September 30th. An update on the commercial vehicle bylaw change that took place at our annual town meeting. On the advice of Town Council, code enforcement will not enforce commercial vehicles that fall within the allowance of, by the citizen petition until the Attorney General's Office weighs in on the bylaw amendment. The code enforcement will continue to enforce vehicles that are wrapped or specialized commercial vehicles. The municipal aggregation plan, an update on that. We, Good Energy, our consultant assisting on our aggregation plan, solicited bids on May 20th on the town's behalf for an energy supplier with the criteria that had been previously voted on by the Select Board. The contract was awarded to Direct Energy. Informational material is being prepared to be mailed out to households in early June. The information will show the different options of plans and cost savings from what residents currently have with Eversource. We were only able to lock in for 15 months to still show a cost savings, but even that short amount of time, we still felt was worth it. A public hearing will be announced in the informational material, and that is scheduled for July 8th at 6:30 p.m. at Greenwood Center, and there will also be a virtual component. Again, as was mentioned during Select Board comments, we had a great Memorial Day ceremony on the Green on May 26th. This was the town's 150th Memorial Day ceremony on the Green. I think it was 155th, if I, I think that was a typo. Thank you to U.S. Air Force Veteran and Commander of American Legion Post 175, Earl Godfrey, and our Veteran Services Director Lena Valturo for putting this ceremony together. An update on road resurfacing. As reported at the May 19th Select Board meeting, Caracas Construction has begun drainage work on Shaker Road as part of this resurfacing project. Drainage work on Shaker should be completed by mid-June, and then additional crews will begin work on other streets as part of the contract. All the drainage work is anticipated to be completed by the end of July, early August. Caracas plans to begin the mail and overlay section of the project the first week in August. Obviously, this schedule is subject to change based on weather, and additional information and updates, including a list of the streets that are going to be paved, can be found on the DPW's website. And lastly, we have launched a survey seeking public input on the future use of Town Hall, Community House, and Old Town Hall. The town is evaluating these buildings to determine necessary improvements and explore future uses. The buildings are currently vacant or underutilized and would require renovation to make them ADA compliant. We want the public's feedback to help guide our planning efforts and ensure that the spaces meet the community's needs. The survey is intended for informational purposes only and makes no assumptions about future use or whether the zoning districts where the properties are located would allow such uses. So we ask everyone to please take a few minutes to share your thoughts and complete the survey. It's linked on the town website and also here in my report. And that concludes my report tonight.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to quickly say that I really like the road resurfacing page that's out there. I think I mentioned it to Mike maybe a few months ago, like another town I'd seen had done it and was great, and it's awesome to see that we're doing it. I think it's really helpful to have this to point residents to throughout the summer. But that's all I had. Anything else from the Select Board? Dan?
Thank you. Lynn, I think you said September 8th, isn't it September 9th? It would be a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday. Did I have the wrong date?
September 9th.
Thank you. It's November 9th.
Everyone, shut up, that's September 8th. Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to just mention a little, a second, a little bit more about municipal aggregation. Lynn kind of briefly spoke on it, but it's, I think it's very important for the town residents to understand what that is. This is a town program, the town is purchasing electricity and offering it to residents for their residential use. As Lynn indicated, we're able, only able to lock in for 15 months to still have savings, so that 15-month contract that's going to be sent to folks in the mail is a lower rate than Eversource. The, what we hope that people will see is that Eversource only can lock in rates for six months, and we locked it in for 15. Six months from now, the winter comes and the next cycle comes. It would be nice to think that Eversource's prices are going up. If they do, our deal looks even better. If they don't, people can opt out and take the better, if Eversource is a better deal. We don't anticipate Eversource will ever be a better deal, but one never knows, and so there is that opt-out capability. So when people look at this, recognize what they're getting is not only a lower rate, but consistency over a longer period of time than they get with this every six months, Eversource up, up and or down, or up and up. So just wanted to make sure people heard that, because there will be a lot of stuff coming in the mail.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right. Thanks, Lynn. We have the, our next item is the liquor license amendment public hearing, but that's scheduled for 7:30, so we will move on to the agenda item after that, which is approval of meeting minutes, and I will, any discussion on that or motions, I'll entertain. Yeah, Mark?
I mean, we can go through these one by one, Venite, and I'll make a motion to approve. And I sent comments to Peggy and Mike. They're almost all, I don't know, grammatical or typographical or whatever it is. And so I'll make a motion, we approve the April 7th meeting minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great.
I'll make a motion, same goes for the May 5th meeting minutes. I'll make a motion, we approve the May 5th meeting minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
... I'll make a motion, we approve the scheduled on May 5th.
My watch is talking about. Venite, in terms of May 19th minutes, there's something in there that concerned me, and since it's, was your comment, I think you ought to take a look at it, and I don't want to put words in your mouth. But I put in a lot of changes that were, again, grammatical or typographical, but there's a section on water rates, and what it says in there is, "Mr. Hamaphthi agreed that we keep the same rate as the same as the first three quarters. However, he was not expecting to see the fixed rate for the third quarter rate." And I thought what you meant to say was, "Mr. Hamaphthi agreed that we keep the same rate as the first two quarters. However, he was not expecting to see the proposed fixed rate for the fourth quarter be the same as the third quarter fixed rate." But before, I'm not going to recommend that change because it puts words in your mouth. I want to make sure that you're okay with that correction.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that seems like just a mistake.
Right, right.
Yeah, second quarter, yeah, first two quarters, yeah.
Okay, we'll clarify it. Okay, again, I just, the others are...
I also added a couple, I informed Mike about a couple small errors, easy to fix.
With that, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of May 19th.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. All right. So really cruising through these, the next item is the stormwater, water sewer, stormwater rates, but I don't think we should start that and talk about it for just nine minutes before. So I will entertain a motion to move the Town Manager Annual Evaluation Agenda Topic to be discussed now. Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. Okay. So we had a chance to meet in executive session and talk about the job that the town manager has done over the last year, and also just talk about the evaluations that we completed, which are attached to the agenda. And I think one thing that we talked about was that there were a lot of the same things that were kind of mentioned throughout the evaluations and some of the strengths that we saw, and also maybe some areas of improvement. But, you know, I think overall, overwhelmingly, you know, we, as the Select Board, we want to let you know, Lynn, about how much we appreciate the work that you've done, how we really do feel lucky to have you in this position. And I know that some points that were hit on by a few different Select Board members in the evaluations and in our conversation was just the recognition of how this past fiscal year presented a lot of different challenges in many different regards. We had a really difficult budget year, and I think, for me personally, one of the things that I saw you do this year was adapt the way that we approached the whole budget process and to bring people into the conversation earlier, especially talking to the school committee, and how much those changes bore fruit and really made some conversations that could have been difficult later on, really smoothed those out. And we ended up, even though had a very difficult budget, ended up being able to present a, you know, a balanced budget and still be able to take care of some priorities that we want to take care of as a town. And I also know that this year, there were a lot of different challenges that arose from, you know, from the actions, interactions with elected officials, residents, staff, everything, and those are really difficult situations to navigate. And I think you just, you did such a great job in handling those situations, and it can be, you know, so easy to, I think, maybe shy away from difficult conversations or difficult decisions, but what you showed throughout all of those different situations was doing the right thing and also putting the interest of the town ahead of everything else. And I don't, you know, I don't know a lot of other managers, leaders that could have navigated all those situations so well. So, you know, thank you, you know, thank you for all of your work in that regard. And I'll kind of open it up to other folks to chime in, and then we can talk about, yeah.
Well said, Venite. Yeah, I mean, like I said, for over the past few years, it's, you know, working with you, and it's, you've been just easy to work with, but you've also been very detail-oriented with memos, and I think one of the things I pointed out was your creativity. Whether it's funding creativity or just other projects that we have going on, I think you always try to, you know, look at other ways of solving really difficult problems, and I can always rely on you to be responsive as well. And sometimes I feel like maybe I'm being annoying because I'm reaching out on maybe a question that maybe I should know, or just a topic that I need to understand a little bit better, and you've just been great. And like I said, when I go to all of the MMA events, whether they're regional events or the annual events every year, like everyone, when you're talking to your peers, everyone speaks so highly of you, and the relationships that you have with your peers speak volumes, and it helps us too with the relationships that you've been able to build, I think with board members, the community leaders, state officials. So I love what Venite had to say, and I mean, I just, you know, when we look at, we're grading you on all of these different items, it's, it's difficult for me to find areas where you're lacking. So I think we're just so fortunate to have you, and appreciate staying with us, and the town is thankful to have you, so appreciate everything.
I definitely, not to belabor the point, but well said, Dan and Venite. We've had very remarkably similar praise and evaluations, and like Dan said, like I've always felt you've been very helpful when I've bugged you with questions and also like informed me of things that I may not have been aware of, and that's very helpful. And I really think the budget season was a very difficult one, and the only thing I'd add is that your relationship with the school leaders, the school district leaders was, I think, invaluable, and that just makes everything so much more collegial and cooperative. And when we see like so many regions, I'm sorry, school districts in the regions nearby around us having cuts and not having level services, I think that this is a testament to like the relationships that you've built in the town and on both sides, so thanks.
Mark?
Just, I've had the pleasure, luxury, or disadvantage of working with three permanent and a couple of temporary town managers, and Lynn, I know a good town manager now. When I work with one, and I'm working with one now, I think you're doing a really good job. And most importantly, and what I hope you take from this is, there are five evaluations that are extraordinarily consistent, and that is very meaningful because we've had instances where two are one-way or one was, you know, they, like, we're talking about the same person. And so I think it's important that everybody appears to be on the same page, and they are. So I think you need to walk away from, at least tonight, but the year, knowing that you're working on the right stuff, and the people who, you know, you report to or who control your fate certainly think that you're doing the right things.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Can I follow up with a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjust Lynn's salary through a percentage raise in an amount consistent with other salaried non-union employees, that we offer her a $7,500 cash bonus and a $5,000 deferred compensation bonus, both to be paid from the 2025 fiscal year budget. Further, we will be extending Lynn's contract by two years to expire July 1st, 2028, with an opener on terms and other benefits to be January 1st, 2028.
Second. Twenty-six? Oh, sorry.
Twenty-twenty.
The extension...
Twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six, okay.
Yes. The last is twenty-twenty-six. Correct. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Glad somebody's listening.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great, thank you.
And Venite has to make sure that you email finance.
Can I?
Finance.
Thank you. Thank you. It means a lot. This job is not an easy one, and it doesn't get any easier. There's more familiarity with it, but the issues are more complex. There's more demands on everything, as you guys all deal with yourselves. And I would be remiss, though, if I did not say that none of this is possible without the team that's behind me. They are phenomenal, the best team I've ever worked with, and they show up every single day and give their all, and take a beating on some things and get praised very minor on other things, but nothing that you've praised me on would be possible without them there with me. But thank you.
You're not talking about the Select Board now.
No, I mean, we don't always agree on everything, but I think we all agree to disagree and have a lot of respect for each other, and I think that that shows in the public, and that's why we're able to get so much great stuff done.
Great. Yeah, and Lynn, I think just where our thinking was with the two-year contract extension was, this was just to show a sort of vote of confidence that in your, in your, the work that you're doing, especially since you had one year left on your contract, but we also do recognize that it is time to negotiate terms and look at the contract as a whole, so that's why we wanted to allow that negotiation still, you know, occur next year.
Sure.
But just wanted to extend that to just show...
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Great, thank you. All right, moving back into the liquor license public hearing, are the folks online?
Yep.
Okay, great, okay. So entertain a motion to move into a public hearing for the liquor license amendment, change of ownership.
Okay.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, great, thank you. All right. So we're here to discuss the change of ownership interest in the liquor license for Max Burger Long Meadow... Long Meadow LLC. If the folks that are here to discuss it could just quickly introduce yourselves, that'd be great. Let's see. Looks like they're talking, right?
Yeah, I don't.
Sorry, Rachel, sorry, Scott. One sec, we're gonna try to fix.
Oh, yes. Uh, one second. We're just gonna move them in as panelists instead. We just gave them the permission to talk, but I'm just gonna move them in as panelists instead, so, it's okay. All right, you guys can try to, try now, I think. Can you hear us okay?
Let's see.
All right.
Mike, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Rachel, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Hello, I am attorney Rachel Fancy here on behalf of the petitioner. I'm out of Fitzgerald Law out of East Long Meadow, offices at 46 Center Square, East Long Meadow. As mentioned by the chair moments before I got on and got access to the mic, we're here for a change of ownership application. What is actually changing is not the ownership itself of the license, it's just the underlying ownership of the owner of the license. So for a high-level view, Max Burger Long Meadow LLC is owned by Max Hospitality. That is not changing, just some of the owners of Max Hospitality had two changes over the past two years. And due to both changes sort of occurring simultaneously, we thought this was the best time to sort of get both done rather than doing one and then coming back again for the second one. So we waited a little and then that is why we have two before you, one for 2023 and one for 2024, diving into the 2023 transaction. The 2023 transaction was a redemption of some membership. So essentially, Max Hospitality redeemed shares and membership from a few members who are no longer affiliated with the, the organization. And so that just got reabsorbed and redistributed throughout Max Hospitality. The 2024 transaction, on the other hand, was Max Hospitality elected to give certain employees who had been longstanding, well-known employees with their institution, shares in their overall corporate structure. So they created a certain subset of membership and gave those individuals ownership as sort of a sign of goodwill and continued growth with them within the organization. I am joined today, if you have any ownership questions, with Scott Smith, who is the manager of Max Hospitality and happy to answer any sort of questions. But overall, this is just a small in-house sort of change. It's not going to be a major overhaul of any sort of organizational stuff. There is not going to be any major changes to Max Hospitality or Max Burger Long Meadow. It's just a small change and these two things just so happened to happen in 2023 and 2024, so we waited to get this all through now. Happy to answer any questions that the board might have. I know I talked a little fast, so happy to revisit anything.
No, no, thank you so much. Yeah, I know, I looked through the documents, everything looked good to me and I know that I have not done this since I've been on the select board, but from what I understand, this is pretty much a rote procedural paperwork kind of thing that just, just needs to happen. So, I don't have any particular questions, I don't know if anyone else from the board does. Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, Rachel, this is Mark Cole. I just want to confirm there will be no change to the management at Max Burger in, in Long Meadow. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, correct. It's just going to be the underlying ownership of Max Hospitality that's changing, which is the owner of the license itself.
Great, thank you. Anything else? On the board? All right, that was easy. Let's, so we will, unless, Mr. Smith, did you have something you wanted to share?
No, I did want to recognize that James Stone, our general manager in Long Meadow, is one of our new partners. So if any of you stopped by Max Burger Long Meadow, please congratulate him. He's worked very hard and he's a great part of the restaurant, a great part of your community.
No, absolutely, I will second that. Great. So if nothing further, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, oh, oh, sorry.
No, no, I was getting ready to vote.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, great. And Mike, do we need to do these two votes separately?
I would vote on them separately.
Okay.
Just to keep it clean.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the 2023 ownership interest in the, in Max Burger Long Meadow LLC liquor license.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? And I will entertain a motion to approve the 2024 ownership interest application for the liquor license at the Max Burger Long Meadow LLC.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you so much, Attorney Fancy and Mr. Smith for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now we will move into the water sewer, stormwater rate discussion. And I know we've got Lisa and Sean here from the DPW and Ian from our finance director. And I believe we have some slides to.
Yep.
Put up on screen.
Yes, we do.
And I will, you know, once this all gets set up, turn it over to you guys to.
I already had a presentation. Yep.
All right, thank you very much. We do have a brief PowerPoint or a brief slide presentation for you tonight to just kind of kick off the discussion. I will, we're gonna share it. We each have slides to go over with you. And I would ask that we have questions at the end so we can keep our flow going. So obviously, you know, we're here tonight for the FY '26 water sewer and stormwater rates. Just a brief overview on the next slide of what we're, what we're talking about. Is there any way to make it?
Bigger?
Yeah. Thanks. So, so these are just some of the goals that you'll see are unique to the recent tie-in-bond study, but also most of them are goals that we have of the utility, no matter what study exists or not. But we need to fund our current and future capital projects. And then the tie-in-bond study recommended that $1 million in retained earnings. This is not something we're looking to get to in the first year, but we do have a staggered approach over the next four to five years. All of that obviously is dependent on, you know, revenue, but the goal would be to build up to a $1 million reserve in retained earnings. We're obviously with our rates, looking to cover our operating costs and then any debt service costs that we've already committed to for projects that were underway or have wrapped up, but we're still paying for. The overall theme always is to minimize the impact to ratepayers. We don't want to make it so costly that we make it a burden on residents, but we need to make sure that we're providing them the, the best water and sewer distribution service that they can have. And then, as you know very well, we have a lot of aging infrastructure and we need to come up with a responsible plan to start chipping away at that. We've made some great efforts on road resurfacing and we need to match that on the water sewer front. So you'll see a lot of that as we get down into talking about our capital plan, but that's just really just an overview of what went into our presentation this year.
All right, that kicks it off to our financial considerations. So, the biggest piece of this, of course, is the operating budget for each of the enterprise funds. So this represents the amount that was approved at town meeting for the water sewer and storm water enterprise funds, the 4.2 million, the 2.5, and the 1.3 million respectively. As Lynn alluded to earlier, our considerations today include the retained earnings target of $1 million. The water and sewer enterprise both have a policy target of $500,000 as a minimum balance and a maximum of $1.5 million as per the current policy. With our goal being to fund this policy over a four- to five-year period, the presentation today will represent a four-year funding of this retained earnings target. Within the operating budget includes the debt service, which is represented below for both water and sewer. And as recommended by the tie-in-bond study, it includes capital projects for a multi-year funding schedule, as Sean will discuss later in the presentation. So given those financial considerations, we have recommendations in terms of the rates.
One second, I'm just gonna try to open the sub-block or something.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Not sure if that's much better. Sorry. Nope, I like it better than I thought.
If you call it some tools, it doesn't go there.
It, it didn't look like it was on my end before I was sharing it. Sorry about that. All right.
I just shared it with you on Google Slides.
Yeah, that might be better.
So while we wait for Mike to pull it up, I guess we'll just talk about the rates as a whole and what they represent. So as you saw to the considerations page before, when we take, when we look at the rate, we are looking at our annual operating budget plus anticipated capital outlays as recommended by tie-in bond, plus the funding of retained earnings. And that gives us our total uses. That represents what the enterprises each need to fund in order to sustain, maintain, and grow our water and sewer systems. So as you'll see with the different rates, we have a couple of different options for you. Thank you, Mike. So, the two that we'll talk about first are the water and sewer, as those will have the most discussion. So, above you'll see tiered rates for the water enterprise fund with a 200% fixed meter charge and a 300% fixed meter charge. I think it's helpful to understand where we came up with the 200% and 300% of the fixed meter charge. I think it's important to note that at prior select board meetings, there was both collaboration and understanding that fixed rates are easier to control. So with a fixed rate, a resident knows what they're gonna get going in, it's a set rate and we can bill it on a quarterly basis. Whereas with your variable rates, it's much more dependent on what your actual usage is, so it's a lot more different to control. So with a 200% rate increase, it's helpful to understand what that means for a resident. Every 10% increase in the quarterly rate generates about a $2.92 increase in a resident's bill. Every 100% increase in the quarterly rate generates about a $29 increase on the water bill. So, for a 300% increase in the tick, in the fixed meter rates, we're talking about an $87 increase in a resident's water bill, just on fixed rates. I think it's important to understand that because it's much easier for us to recommend a change in the fixed rates when a resident can know immediately what the difference is in their bill on a year-to-year basis. Now, that's another point, is that 86% and 87% of your residents for water and sewer are 3/4 inch and 5/8 inch. So that increase of about $87 is going to be a large majority of your population. So where that looks to for the tiered rate in terms of the variable rate is a $6.34 per unit for 200% or a $6.07 unit for 300%. As you'll see, with an increasing fixed rate, it drives down the total fixed rate and the variable rate. In terms of the tiered rate piece, tier one, which is your under 25 units, would be at $5.46, tier two would be at $6.28, and tier three would be at $7.23. For 200% would be $5.76, $6.56, and $7.58 for each of the three tiers. The predominant users of tier one are the largest percentage of your base and we felt that with a tiered rate, this would capture the largest percentage of your residents who would not see a substantial change in their rates on a year-to-year basis. Lisa put together a, a chart that shows the change in user rates on a year-to-year basis, which is, which was sent to you previously. For the sewer piece of this, the same thing applies. We would be recommending a tiered rate, which would follow the 203% fixed rate change as well as the, the change in the water and sewer rates. For the storm water, this is a much smaller equation. This would be a change to a $9.74 for a estimated revenue unit, which at an annual rate is about $116.84.
Next slide.
Next slide.
So I'll go through some of the projects that we've come up with. Some of these products are reference in the tie-in bond study, some of them come up from us, O'Neil and multiple other firms we've worked with. A lot of this stuff come, has been brought forth in-house. Tim Keen, the town engineer, is also the water commissioner in Holyoke. So we have a pretty good depth of understanding of the system and how to run one. The, the first one you'll see there is redundant water tank analysis that we just completed, which is to look at what another tank in town looks like in case there is a fire or we have another issue with a water main break in Springfield that we can't provide enough water. It gives us some leeway, especially in the high use seasons. I think you remember, maybe it was a year or two ago, there was a break in Springfield. Our water tanks were drawn down. That put us in a very vulnerable position in terms of putting out fires. It also puts us in a vulnerable position. If we have to rely on Springfield to fix a water leak and it takes a couple of days, we will have no water. That's why you'll see the second priority product is the interconnection study, feasibility study with Enfield, which we just recently, recently completed. So we'll be coming forward with a memo to you guys this summer, hopefully, laying out both of these projects, what they mean and what the benefits are and costs, hopefully, rough costs for both of them are. If you decide to move forward with one or both of the projects, we will have to fund full design. The other project you'll see there is the Western Drive Waterline Project. That project is fully designed and ready to go. We had hoped to go out to bid now for this project, but unfortunately, we're not able to. One thing to consider with that project is, when I first started here and we're trying to merge these capital plans together, it was obvious we were, we were paving roads that we're gonna have immediate needs to replace the water and sewer lines, so we're having new roads bust apart because we weren't doing the infrastructure in the linear progression, which they should be done. So Western Drive was scheduled to be paved a couple of years ago. We pulled that so we could do the water and sewer line project first. So that's why that product stands there. Part of that project is to repave that road using the enterprise funds. So there, and the, and obviously the next project is the sewer line. You're doing the water, you might as well do the sewer line in Western Drive and the sewer side. You should do everything at once if you can, obviously. The sewer system is, is a little bit easier to replace than the water system because the technology exists a slip line, a great deal of the mains, which is a cost savings. You sort of, you run like a snake through the lines and it re-hardens and you get quite a bit of life out of those sewer lines without having to rip them up out of the ground. But it's important to do those sewer lines when you can still slip line before they get to the place where they disintegrate. So it's, again, a cost benefit to get in front of these projects before they collapse completely and you're doing everything from a reactive manner. The other project you'll see up there is the Raspberry Brook repairs and the stormwater that was talked about at town meeting, I believe. So, yeah, we have, I forget, it was the Colbert, so it's in the capital plan for this year. I don't know if you want to go through all these.
No, I just touched on it.
All right. So some of these were already discussed. I do want to mention that this plan really started to come together my second year here and it's a living document. There is stuff that's always added. We get together as a team pretty consistently to throw things on there that I thought of when we're missing already. So this is not set in stone, but this stuff, as it comes up, we, we try to put it in and you guys have been given this normally, I think, with your, with your budgets annually for the last two years, you should have had some version of this in. So the last two years, you should have had some version of this in, in Excel. It is a lot, there is a lot that goes into it. I think it's important to understand that when these products come about, there's sometimes a feasibility study before there's the, the engineering, before there's an actual budget number that then goes into construction. It's a three to four-year process, which is why you'll see me get a little bit nervous when we talk about products two or three years out. We need to start getting in front of that stuff, especially with these waterline projects. They need to be designed, out to bid, with a good period of time for the contractor to do the work, and hopefully, give that waterline a year to settle before we come back in and pave. So if any problems with the waterline emerge, we still have the warranty from the previous contractor, and then we're, that allows things to settle. So there's a lot of moving, moving parts to this. And you might remember me bringing up the project on Shaker Road, the waterline project, which you'll see up there. When we go to pave a road, if we know we are gonna come back within 10 years to, to fix the water system, we're not gonna put as much money into the paving, because you wanna have a road that lasts 20 years. When you repave it, you repave it right. But if you know you're gonna be back doing the water system, you can do a little bit of a more temporary paving, and then come back later and do the water and sewer system, hopefully. So there's a lot of moving stuff. And while all this is going on, we're also looking at grants, and trying to figure out how to do preliminary engineering, to pull in a grant, and coordinate all that. So there's lots and lots of stuff going on. One project, I think, the area around Bliss, we don't have up here yet, but it will be. There's gonna be some stuff we'll have to do, hopefully stuff we can get a master's grant to cover. But all that requires a lot of flexibility in terms of the capital budget, a lot of flexibility in terms of our ability to pivot this stuff and have stuff shovel-ready. We didn't have a lot of engineering money to start a couple of years back. We've gotten to that point through a couple of years of funding to get a lot of this stuff started and the ball moving with these projects. So, um, you know, we're, we're in a decent shape in terms of our plan, there is stuff to do, but we will need direction about what we can and can't do, and that's really gotta come from you guys. You'll see a ton of stuff up here, some of the stuff we've talked, touched upon. We do have another valve in the force main down in the, in the, that goes to, sewer main that goes to Springfield that is gonna, it's invulnerable, we're gonna have to get that fixed. There's some sizable projects up here. Sorry, I can't see.
I know, it's small.
I think it'd probably be more pertinent, if anything popped up that you guys, you know, afterwards wanted to talk about, it could give you more specificity with them. But, um, you'll see some reoccurring stuff as well in terms of catch basin repairs, repairs to stormwater system, and there's various water and sewer line products that hopefully we're coordinating two or three years in front of our paving. So there's, sometimes there's a blank line that says various waterline, various sewer line projects. We're not trying to fix everything, we're really just trying to sift through the stuff that makes the most sense and gives us the most sort of bang for the buck. There's a lot of culverts that we have had almost no, no real funding for. We've done maybe two in the last few years that I can think of. Those are a major, major vulnerability, and the cost for each of them is split between a half a million and a million dollars. So you do one of those every couple of years, and it eats up the entire capital budget. So we need to do design for those and hopefully get a couple of grants, but the grants for the culverts are very few and far between. Continuing our valve exercising program, which had been let, let go, that's another one that we need to keep doing. We don't have the staff to do it in-house, nor, nor, nor the time. So we've had to put that up to bid, and we're starting a process of doing that. If we don't do that, then we will not be able to isolate leaks when we do have them, and it creates a headache, and it is, it makes a danger if there is a fire, so, yeah.
I just wanna add here, one thing that's really glaring, more so for, for you guys to know, and, cause this is something I've seen myself. If you go back and look at our capital plans, our five-year plans, even go back to 21 or 20, and go and look at this current year's five-year capital plan, they are vastly different, and that's directly attributed to Sean's work and the DPW's teamwork to fully capture all of the scope of what's on their plate. It's everything from buildings and roads, but also the, the massive impact that they've made in water, sewer, and stormwater, just making sure they have everything captured so that we know what we're responsible for. I, I would just encourage you to just, to do it, just to see the, the massive difference between leadership levels at the DPW over the last couple of years. It's, it's really impressive, and it makes it easier, but, you know, the numbers are staggering, but it makes it easier in terms of planning and knowing what we have ahead of us.
So next steps, as the water and sewer commissioners, you will need to set a water rate for both the fixed charge and the unit rate. That could be the tiered rate or a non-tiered rate. Unis does have the capability to easily put in a tiered rate system. It would automatically look at every user and correctly bill what units fall into which tier. And then sewer, you'll have their fixed charge in your sewer rate, and we would like to maintain that 55-unit cutoff for April through June, and July through September quarters for the residential. All the rates were calculated with that in mind, that we were using that type of unit total as the average. And then stormwater is a rate that residential users get one unit per month, and then commercial has a multiplier on that for how big of a property of impervious service they have. So other considerations. I know there's been some discussion of having a low-income veteran or senior discount. We did put that in our memo as well for some options of that. Right now, it was just those who qualify through the assessor's office. They are the same residents who get a stormwater discount right now. With that said, if you wanted to expand it further, the rate for people who are not getting the discount may need to increase to compensate. We also would like, want to look at the billing schedule to be that rates are instituted April 1st through May 31st of the following year. This would help match the rate with the fiscal year revenue and expenses. We did ask a few other communities around us that are on a quarterly basis, do they, you know, do July 1st, or do they do April 1st? And we did receive back that they are doing April 1st to help match this. And then lastly would be maybe down the road to look at the bylaws. Some of that has not been updated in many years. One thing that comes to mind is Sean, Lynn, and Ian are signing off on abatements, where I believe the bylaws say that as commissioners you would be, so. Some stuff like that, just to update and make sure that it's all what is happening or what should be happening.
Great, okay, great, thank you so much. I'm sure that there are a lot of questions, comments from the select board, so I will, I'll jump right in, ask a few questions. So you all talked about needing the redundant water tank and the interconnection. And I guess if you all could just kind of speak a little bit more about the importance of doing that, are there, is this something that other communities do? You know, for me, when I'm listening to this presentation, and I think about our aging infrastructure, that also makes me think that it, there's more of a need for this, and I don't know if that's correct, but if there are any, you know, specific conditions maybe that make it more important for Long Meadow, or whether this is kind of like a normal practice amongst towns?
Sure, so I've managed a few water systems that had interconnections with their communities, partly because we didn't have enough left water in our reservoir, but other times just to make sure there's redundancy in case there's some issue, which could happen at a pump station anytime. So obviously, redundancy is good for insurance. Long Meadow is specifically vulnerable because of the amount of flow that comes in the summer with the amount of irrigation. And our tanks could get drawn down during high use, usage periods to a level that we don't have fire protection. It hits that very, very often in a regular summer. We do have the ability to go in and turn the pumps on to add more flow, but we're still pushing it, which is why when we had that drought a little while ago, we had some, some nervousness about the, the flow. Or if we had an electrical issue at our pump station, we could have something happen in, in Springfield during their upgrade, which very recently, there was a warning about that they expected there to be some hiccups, and that communities locally should prepare for that, that there could be a loss of water. I believe a report was drafted 15 or 20 years ago stating that we probably should look at interconnection, that at that time, it wasn't followed through upon for whatever reason. Beyond both of those, I think, well, so fire protection, number one, increased head pressure, and the, the high probability that the distribution system in Springfield, beyond their mechanical pumping, is gonna have a catastrophic failure at some point. And at some point, the communities that pull from Springfield are likely gonna have a loss of water for several days, in which case the tanks will not be enough, and we will have no water. That is a major, major vulnerability, and it's something that you guys should, to think about addressing. And some, I mean, you could do the tank, you could do an interconnection, you could do both, you could do neither, but you should know what the risks are going forward.
Okay, and then the interconnection is with, with you with Enfield?
Yes.
Correct, okay. And then, okay. So, kind of, I'm gonna be kind of just jumping around a little bit. Right now, there's work being done on Shaker Road. It's also on capital plan for FY 2027. So could you kind of just walk through what this, what the kind of overall plan for Shaker Road is? Cause I know, this is a road that we hear about all the time.
Right, I think that there had been before I arrived, some hesitancy to go to Shaker Road because of some pipeline thing, which has nothing to do with me, or, and I said, well, the road's in catastrophic failure, we hear about it all the time. So we are right now doing the drainage, not the full drainage system, but the, the catch basins, and a mill and overlay of that road to put in a decent course to, to last for, for 10 years or so. It is not a full-depth sort of rebuild in the way that you really would like to, with the base being ripped out, knowing full well, we're gonna have to come back to redo the sewer and water at some point. So that, that's just considerations. If you're gonna come in and build Route 5 over like we're going to next year, it's a, it's a bigger problem, not necessarily all of it, but it's a big process when you're doing a full road reclamation, reconstruction versus a mill and overlay, which is what we're doing in some of these roads, knowing that we're gonna be coming back to do the water and sewer later.
Okay, so.
Sorry, I was just gonna add. I, I, in these five-year plans, they are a best guess estimate. So the only thing we know for cer, for certain is that upcoming fiscal year. Everything in the out years is really just like, we're placing it there, we know it's, it needs to get done, but it shifts a lot. And so I think, looking at this thinking, well, FY 27's not that far off. We haven't even paved Shaker yet, that doesn't make sense, so.
It's just a no, it's coming, okay.
I will 100% certain say Shaker Road is not getting water lines in FY 27.
But if, if, if in some manner, let's just say, not saying it will happen, the gas company was to come through, and they would wanna rip up that new road, we would wanna make sure to say, well, no, and if you do, if it happened, we're doing our water and sewer, by the way, and then maybe you guys rebuild our road for us, if something like that was to happen.
Okay, got it, that makes sense. Yeah, I think, thank you for that clarification, I think that's, that's important. Also, I, I emailed you all a question about the south end of Long Meadow Street, and, and Mark mentioned that, you know, that there's talks about this, maybe starting, beginning in 2028. And for me, in my time on the select board, I've seen that delays can come from, you know, all sorts of different places, so this makes me nervous, even though we're three years, three years out. Like, I, I feel like, from what I've seen, it's important to get the design and engineering going on this. And so could you maybe speak to that?
Sure, so I think a good example would be what we're going through right now with the L project. Although that product's been delayed, we're three months from having a, we would've been three months from having a problem with our current schedule. There was a chance that the state could've gone out to bid and started right now, and we wouldn't be doing our water project. So we wanna make sure the design's done, and we would like ideally a year for that water and sewer line work to settle, for everything to be done before the state comes in and does their work. You don't wanna be doing them concurrently or even close to each other, which is a bad idea. Especially if someone was to fall off the tip, which does happen, and we were to be moved forward on it, which has happened, I've had products go forward. Doesn't happen that often now, but it does happen, and we would wanna be ready. So I, I think, and, and it, it makes perfect sense to make sure your design is done, and to give the contractor as much time as possible to do the project, because you get the best deal from them.
Okay, great, and then, so you, you all are also recommending tiered rates, which is different than what has been done in Long Meadow historically. And so, you know, this kind of seems like a philosophical difference perhaps. And so if you could kind of maybe speak a little bit more about why you are recommending tiered rates, and why that might be a better approach, or why you all think that might be a better approach?
Sure, so I, I'll start, and then I can let Sean jump in. So we, we spent a lot of time looking at this, and regardless of the prior studies that had also recommended tiered rates, the need in the system primarily right now is that a redundant water tank, and that is primarily due to volumetric water use. And as we looked at different rate options, and realized that that tank is gonna cost a lot, the rationale for tiered rates is that the higher water users would be the ones paying for that tank. The, currently what's happening now, if we kept the non-tiered rates, the lower users are subsidizing the rates for the higher users, cause everybody's paying the same rate. I, I get that the higher users would be paying a, a higher bill, but the delivery of that water to them is, is the, the need for that bigger system is due to the higher users. Sean probably has more to add to that. But it is a more progressive model that is, is looked at by a lot of cities and towns for water distribution. I'm not talking about the pipes and the, the meters. I'm talking about building out the capacity in the system to meet the demands of those higher users. It is very frequent that when you have something like that, you would tier your rate.
That's fine.
Great, okay, I have more questions, but I'll let someone else jump in. Yeah?
On the topic of interconnection, so, I, and I feel like this was something that I talked to about Sean maybe a couple of years ago. And could you just touch on, like, if, if we're going to do an interconnection, isn't there, there's gotta be more science involved to this, where you're essentially mixing other water into pipes that have been familiar with the water from Springfield, for example? I don't know how else to put it, but does that create other issues?
Yeah, I think that the common thing that, when people talk of this, it gets brought up as flint, because those are two different waters going in the same line. So that's why you run the feasibility study, and there's immense amount of permitting to do anything of that nature. So you need to know what the water pH is, you need to know how it's gonna interact with your pipes, and you need to test it to make sure it's not, if you have lots of lead or areas with high lead, you need to test to see if that new water from another system is causing a chemical change in the lines that could create lead. We do not have much lead in the system as we can, and, but there is always a, a risk, and you, that's why you must go through the permitting and show that it's gonna work before you do. I don't think it would be, if you guys move forward, it would be something we'd be relying upon all the time. We were not looking to have Enfield be the, our sole supplier of drinking water. It would be there in a case of emergency when you really needed it, or a fire or something of that, that side of town.
Okay, yeah, cause my, my biggest concern is all of a sudden, we have this interconnection, then it just opens up a can of worms, and, and we have some serious issues that we have to address. So as, you know, to be part of a study, this would all be, okay, because, alright, that, that really scared me, a couple of years ago, we had the conversation. The other, the other question I had, and Lisa brought it up, was, I think there's 129, just looking at the report, folks who could receive assistance. One of my questions to Lynn when we all submitted questions was, how could we, you know, cause our, the rates are going up, right? So how can we, how can we potentially expand, you know, a discount to more seniors? Or folks that, that need it, like veterans or folks that could use the help? So I'd just really like to understand a little bit more.
Sure.
I think it would just, first, we'd have to figure out how much of that population is there, to then determine how many would be getting the discount to realize what impact does it have on the other users? Cause if you just said everyone over 65, we'd have to run and figure out how many over 65 households are there to then figure out that impact.
So for tonight's proposal, all we did was mirror what's currently in place for the stormwater utility. So it's a, there's a 30% reduction for those that qualify. And that's, that's, again, that's already in place. When the stormwater policy was adopted, that discount was put in place. There's about 129 households that qualify.
Couldn't that be done on just a fixed rate for these individuals, as well as a potential option? And I'm not suggesting we have to do this tonight, but I just think it'd be helpful if the, the water commissioners, being us, the select board, could maybe come up with some sort of equation in the future that we could identify additional users. And that's a longer conversation than tonight, but I just think that's something worth investigating.
Just to follow onto that, for those who qualify, is it something they apply for? Or is it something that some demographic thing is identified, and they automatically have, happens?
Yeah, it would be automatic, those that already apply for and receive the blind elderly and veteran exemption through the assessor's office. So the list would then just go directly from the assessor's office, like it does for stormwater. Lisa would just then input it in for water sewer.
And we meet on this annually to determine if there are residents who were supposed to qualify but didn't, or who fall off, so.
Or who didn't, to make sure that, that house isn't still getting it, if they moved out.
Mark?
Thanks, I have a whole series of.
I have a whole series of questions and I sent some in Lynn and I appreciate you folks answering them. Some of it became more confusing than not, but I guess I, my, my first question is, what was wrong with the process by which we used to set water rates? Which was, look at the cost of running our department, you know, our, our salaries, wages, you know, expenses, purchase, water we purchased from Springfield, capital costs and any changes we want to make to the, to the enterprise fund or the retained earnings fund or whatever you want to call it. That becomes the total cost we need to raise and divide that by a presumed usage rate. That usage rate then can be, uh, you know, obviously that, that usage rate can be whatever we, we think it should be, although I think that ought to have some basis, whether it's a three-year running average or a five-year running average or whatever it is. And the component of that, and one of the things I said is, one of those components is how much money we want to raise or we need for capital, that we're going to spend for capital. And, you know, that ought to be what our current commitments are and what's in the DPW's 2026 project plan. You know, what we've all agreed that we need to do. Personally, I think an interconnection is a, something we really need to do and we ought to keep working on that. I'm not so hot on a second tower, tank because it's just so god awful expensive and I'm not sure if we have the right process for managing it, but that's my personal opinion. The point is, we have to decide, you know, what the, what the capital is. And then once we do that, you know, we know the, the amount of money we need to raise and there's only two ways to raise it, fixed rates and variable rates. And in fact, fixed rates could be anything we want it to be, but you know, the select board, the water and sewer commissioners need to decide, you know, will fixed rates be all part or some part of the capital costs or, or something other than that? And will the, the balance of what we need to raise go into variable rates, right? And it seems to me that that's more important because then, once we get the fixed rates, it makes very, it, it makes, it's very easy to then say, here's how we're going to distribute that amongst the, amongst the meter, the rate users. You know, I, I sent Lynn, I sent you and everybody else, they've got the, the spreadsheet. It's pretty easy to do. But what we've got here, and I use this term, was the, is the tail wagging the dog. We're coming up with the fixed rate and the rate for the meters before we decided how much we want to raise in fixed rates, what percentage of the capital we're spending we want to raise in fixed rates. And I think that's a decision that, that ought to come first. So if, if I was looking at a process underneath, I think that's what we ought to focus on as a process is, you know, decide first tiered or non-tiered rates. Then decide, you know, how much are we going to, of, of the, of the amount of money we need to raise, you know, how much are we going to put into fixed rates and how much into variable rates? And once we do those, which are seemingly straightforward decisions to make, this, the solution is there. So, you know, I mean, I, I look at stuff like, you know, and, and Ian, one of the things you said is, you know, the water department debt is 980,333. Um, I wasn't quite certain, is that our current rate or is that the, so that's what we're paying if we do no new projects? Okay, that, that's fine. And that, that makes sense. You know, in, in terms of some of the other things, I guess, I'm, I'm not quite certain of some of the other decisions like, you know, how we pay, how we decide how much we need to put into capital. So Sean, you've, you've outlined a whole bunch of projects, you know? The question is, how much do we need to raise now? And how much do we not need to raise now, but would be nice to? And the other part is, how much are we going to increase our retained earnings by? And what I heard from Lynn is four to five years and then, Ian, you said it's within four years. So that, if it's four years, then we're raising $250,000 in retained earnings. If it's within five years, it's $200,000. But the one thing I haven't heard here is, how do we? It's, the word is, the phrase is true up. How do we true up with the city of Springfield? Because I go back to believing the Water Stabilization Fund, and that's what I've always called it, is required because whatever assumption we make, whatever we make for a usage assumption, we're going to assume wrong. We're either going to assume far too low, lower number, which is going to be great because we'll have all this additional revenue, or we're going to assume far, a, a higher number and we're going to fall short. And the city of Springfield at the end wants, wants to be made whole. And so the question is, where does that true up come from? And in my mind, it's, the only source is the Water Stabilization Fund or the Water Rate Stabilization Fund. Because there's no other money, I mean, the, the water department's got to run as a water department. Can't take it out of taxpayer revenue. So my, my point is, we need a process and I don't think we have it. I think we've jumped to say we're going to do a 200% or 300% fixed rate and that's not the right way to do it. The right, right way to do it is say, here's how much we want to raise from fixed rates and here's what they end up being. It could be something very different from those and I hope it will be.
If I could address, um, I'll also look to Ian and Lisa for this, but, um, I think it's maybe we're just semantics here, um, but that's exactly what Lisa and Ian do in order to present rates to you. Um, there, there's not some different mechanism that they're using. If you want to talk about your process that you will go through.
Yeah, and I mean, I kind of alluded this, alluded to this earlier in the presentation. What we've presented to you today is very similar to past years in terms of what we're presenting to the select board. Really, the only difference is just the format and how it's presented. We still use the annual operating budget. We still use, um, our debt service. And really, the difference is here is we are recommending a funding of retained earnings and we are recommending funding of capital projects. Both of those are recommended by the time bond study. So really, we're looking for the select board to give us the directive to say, one, do we want to go forward with funding the retained earnings at a level of either four years at 250,000 or five years at 500,000 or a variation of that? Two, do we want the town to have a certain amount of money allocated towards capital projects? And then three, how do we want to present that? When Lisa and I came up with our fixed rates, we really were trying to minimize the impact that was felt by residents. That's why when I went over earlier, the impact that residents would see, I thought that that was a much better solution than to have these large double-digit increases in the variable rate. I think that that's the better approach that we can take. And on top of that, with tiered rates, you are going to see the largest expense be burdened by the highest users. That I think is a equitable approach, which represents the presentation at the current moment. Mark, in terms of your question about, is it different than what we've done in the past? I would say the answer is no. I think they really, the only difference is whether or not we want to go forward with a tiered rate or a fixed rate.
But how, Ian, how, how did you come up with this 200% or 300% increase in, in, in the fixed rate? Why didn't we say, here's how much money we need to raise through fixed rates and therefore the fixed rate becomes such and such?
If the select board?
That's what I meant by the tail wagging the dog. If you come up with the fixed rates first, that's not the way we should be doing it. And that's not the way we've done it in the past. We've always said, here's how much we want to raise and therefore we calculated the rates. So you can't convince me you're doing it the same way.
If the select board wants to have our fixed meter revenue cover the retained earnings funding or anticipated capital projects, for example, I would welcome that directive and we could tailor our presentation to fit that. Right now, you have the recommendation by both Lisa and myself, as well as Lynn and Sean, that represents what we think the best option is.
Okay. I, I will go on record as saying, I think tiered rates is improper. I think the select board has pretty much said that. You know, I, I'll use an old phrase from my family, Yiddish phrase called chutzpah. You know what chutzpah is? Means you've got a lot of nerve that city of Springfield's charging us a, a flat rate and we're going to go out and charge a fixed rate. I can't imagine why we would do that. And I understand Lynn, your argument that says the people who use the most will pay for something more. But the fact is, you know, we sat here and we listened to the commissioners of the Springfield Water and Sewer Department saying, we've got plenty of water, please use it. And in fact, I will argue very vehemently that a fixed rate becomes a spiral to a problem in town. Because if the fixed rates do what people impose fixed rates for, which is to curtail water use, what will happen is we'll put in a fixed rate and people will use less water. And then we're going to have to charge more because we need the revenue. Now you say, well, maybe they won't use less water, but that's what fixed rate, that's what a variable rate, not fixed rates, I'm sorry, a tiered rate. I apologize. If a tiered rate does what a tiered rate is supposed to do, the people with higher tiers will use less water. And once we do that, we'll have less revenue. What we want to do is encourage as much revenue as we can. You know, as the people in city of Springfield, I'm probably paraphrasing, we've got plenty of water, use all you need. You know, or something to that effect because it's good for their revenue and frankly, it's good for our revenue.
Um, and I, and I think, Mark, with the tiered rates, I believe in the time bond study, we asked, when they came before us, we asked them about if this would change behavior and what they had said was that the research has shown that the highest users, even with a higher rate, really does not change their behavior, right? They still are using water at the same levels, if I'm remembering correctly. Okay.
Well, I'll speak about a few things, but I'm not sure that was my conclusion, but I, you know, I've thought a lot about the variables, right? The 200%, the 300%, the tiered rate, the non-tiered rate. I talked to some people and had them look at their like bills and just see what it would look like. Um, I think we're trying to balance, of course, two very valuable things, right? We're trying to balance, trying to have a lower rate for the most amount of people versus making sure we get the revenue we need, right? And when I looked at the bar chart, like this bar chart that you guys put up for us, I, I looked at, you know, a high irrigation user, if you did a tiered rate, you would be doubling their bill. So like in this example that you gave us, from $1,600 a year to $3,200 a year, basically. And if you did it for the low residential user, right, that's someone who doesn't irrigate a lawn, theirs is going to go up from like 211 to 359, so basically like $140. And it reminded me of when we are discussing the business, the, the split tax rate, for example. And the reason why we usually don't content, can contemplate that is because you basically be charging our businesses, if you charge them higher tax rate, a huge amount versus a very tiny amount of benefit for the average user. And when I think about someone who irrigates a lot and their bill going doubling from 1,600 to 3,200, I'm sure there are some people in town who will water no matter, if it's a $10,000 bill, they will do it. But I just also believe that this does incentivize people to be much more cautious about their watering, delaying their watering, reducing their watering, and it will just naturally reduce their usage. And when you look at the huge amount that they're spending to benefit a relatively small amount for the rest of the users, I just worry that we are going to end up with less revenue in the end. When you have less revenue in the end, then the fixed costs, which we are also raising, everyone agrees on that, becomes a higher percentage of the amount and it, the burden actually falls more, I mean, this is theoretical and I'm not wedded to any of these ideas. I'm most interested in making sure we get the revenue we need and in a predictable way. I honestly think the greater risk is to use a tiered system, there's more uncertainty with that. And I think that the 80% of users, it will get, benefit them a small amount, um, compared to like the higher users. That's just the way I'm seeing it right now. Again, I'm not wedded to any of this stuff, but I, I think that when you do the math, you might be surprised at how it really affects people's usage. And my, my, I didn't, that wasn't my takeaway from the time on people. I mean, I think that that was mentioned, but I think there was acknowledgement that like people are people and anything could happen, basically. There's no study that's going to show exactly what's going to happen in our town, depending on what you did with the rates, basically.
Yeah, I mean, of course. I mean, but I think, I think they had looked at research and, and they had talked to us about what the research has shown. And that's, and that's why I was just asking about that, just to clarify that I had that correct, because I remember that that was something that kind of stood out to me about that, uh, presentation was that they said that they had actually looked at research that showed that really did make a behavioral change. And, and I'm not making an argument.
Yeah, no, I don't remember exactly that. I think it was mentioned, but it's fine.
Just, yeah. Anything else? And, and again, we're not voting on anything tonight. Um, you know, we're, just wanted a chance to discuss this, ask questions, um, of our staff. Um, and then, you know, we can vote on this at our next meeting. But also I know that you all were also kind of looking for direction and, you know, in, in some ways. So was hoping also today, maybe you could, through our conversation, could provide some direction as well. Dan?
I was just going to make a comment, just in terms of the, the definition of insanity, right? We've all heard that. We, we've been doing the same thing over and over and over and over again and we get the same results. I mean, I, every, every time we bring this up, I, I get, I get pretty fired up over this just because we're expecting that all of a sudden something's going to change one year to the next by doing the same thing over and over again. I mean, we had tie-in bond study, we've had multiple studies done, uh, over the past 20 years. We never act on it fully. We do bits and pieces. We just had a great presentation and I'm not suggesting that I am all in on a, on a tiered rate. But at the end of the day, they're the professionals. I mean, you are all, you, you live and die this every single day. Like we're the water commissioners because we're on the, um, select board. But I'm not going to sit here and, and, and tell everybody that I, I know every single thing about water and sewer. I'm still learning. I'm learning a lot and I've learned a lot in the past few years. But I like to listen to people, uh, who give direction based on that's their job and they, they do research, um, and they do a lot of research and they come in front of various towns and, and put forward what's the best, um, solution that they believe for the town of Long Meadow. And the other good thing about being water and sewer commissioners is that, guess what? We can make changes whenever we want. So we haven't done that for 20 years. In fact, in some cases, we've been taking the rates and, and paying down to, using the funds to pay down the, the rates for the rate payers. And now we have a mountain of projects building up and the political thing to do would, would to just say, well, I don't want to vote for an increase. It's like, why do you get in this position if you're not trying to make a difference to do the right thing for our community? Our, our roads are falling apart, infrastructure's falling apart and, and some of us are sitting here tonight saying, you know what, let's just keep doing what we've been doing for 20 years. I just, I just don't think that's what people elected us to do, to look and, and listen to people who actually day in and day out do the research necessary.
Can I just answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think there might be a little misunderstanding here. Um, the thing that we're doing that's different is raising the rates a lot. So I think what might not be clear is whether we use the 200, and I, this is my first question to Ian, right, he remembers me last week. The amount of money we do, we're raising is the same, whether it's the 200, 300%, whether it's the tiered or non-tiered. It's, it's all the same amount of money we're raising. So we're not kicking the can down the road because we are all agreeing, we need to raise more money. All we're talking about is how are we going to raise the money? The amount of money we're raising is the exact same, whether, if we do tiered versus non-tiered, 200, 300%, it's all the same. It's just, we're talking about how to get there, basically. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Well, we're talking about an increase of 200%, 300%.
That's a big increase.
Yeah, these are, these are big increases. Because we've been doing the same thing over and over. That's what I'm trying to say. So people need to understand that.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's disagreeing.
I say that with all due respect, I'm just saying that's what we continue to do.
But I don't think we're disagreeing at all. I think we all agree, we need to raise more money.
And we're not listening to professionals that are providing the guidance to us. This is, these are professionals that work with communities across the country.
I think we're absolutely listening to them. I think they're telling us, we need to raise more money, we could do it tiered or non-tiered, this is what the rate would be, 200, 300, this is what the rate would be. I mean, I'm not wedded to any of these. I think as long as we raise the money, I'm in favor of it. That, your point would be valid if, or important, or if one of us was saying, we shouldn't raise the rates, we can't afford it, uh, because we don't want to raise rates on people. I don't think anybody's saying that. Just to kind of clarify that, I don't think we're arguing, we're like debating, uh, in disagreement at all, to be honest. It's just a matter of method.
And, but I think, I do think that the one place where we are raising more money is to do more capital projects, right? So that is also.
Everyone's agreeing to do that. I don't, I haven't heard anyone, is that what you mean?
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this has been a point of contention of select board discussions.
About whether we should?
About how much in capital projects we should be actually taking on and doing and funding.
I see.
Yeah.
I have no issue with that. I think we're just debating the method at which we raise the money that our experts are telling us that we need to raise. I think we should raise that amount of money.
I've got so much.
Mark may not agree, but.
Well, no, I essentially agree with you, Andrew. I think the issue is, you know, Dan said we're, we've been doing the same thing, we can't, we have to do something different, and Andrew's response, I think, was appropriate. You know, the way we're doing it, you know, the presentation, like I said, there was a discussion on 200%, 300%, and that just drove me nuts because I thought we should say, here's how much we wanna raise. The right answer may be 237.5% increase in the fixed rate, but we didn't, we're not being given that choice because there was an assumption made by the staff that it should be this or that, when in fact, maybe it should be something, maybe it should be 380%. I don't know what the number should be, but we don't know, because we haven't agreed how much we wanna do. And frankly, I think listening to the professionals is our obligation, listening to the staff is our obligation, but listening to the residents and bringing the voice of the residents to this discussion is also our obligation. And that's not something tie-in bond necessarily does, and it may not be something our staff does, although I like to think that they do certainly because they're gonna get the phone calls, so I think they're gonna listen to it as well. But to say that we can do as much as we can do, and we're not gonna do what we can't do, we're gonna pay for the capital that we can execute, but we're not gonna go out and raise their rates to raise capital that we can't spend because we can raise their rates the following year to pay for that capital. You know, we can say, you know, we can raise the stabilization fund or whatever you wanna call it, in four years or five years, you know, my sense is, we may, we may have a very, very dry year this year. I don't know, I'm not a weather forecaster. And if we do, that water stabilization fund will increase because we're gonna guess low on usage. So why wouldn't we go out and raise rates to boost that stabilization fund in a shorter period of time, when we can say, let's raise it slower, let's let the money go up a couple hundred thousand dollars this year, and see what happens? If we have a very wet summer this year, we're gonna say, boy, Mark screwed up and we need to raise more money, and we can accelerate it. But if we have a dry summer and we bring in, at the end of the year, we're not at $200,000 higher, we're at $350,000 higher, we'll know we can do things. So what we bring is some experience, some voice of the residents, and also a desire to keep the, keep our rates controlled. You know, Sean, last month, you know, we had a whole long laundry list of projects we wanted. We wanna do them all, but we only wanna pay for the ones that we're gonna do this year. We, we don't have the capacity to engineer them, to execute, you know, 20, that whole list of projects that we showed on your wish list. So let's pick the things we wanna do. Let's agree as a water and sewer commissioners, is our highest priority an interconnection with Enfield or to put in a new, you know, a second water tower? And when can we execute that? And I haven't heard that timing because I think that certainly would sway me one way or the other, if it's, if it's that important. I also wanna see how often we need a second water tower, how would we manage the levels of the water towers so that, you know, it's an engineering process, not just to construct it and it's there? So there's a lot involved here, and to say we're doing the same things we've always done is not correct. We're making some changes. And I'm gonna go off topic a little bit, but I need to because I've been sitting here for three years hearing that we keep doing the things we've been doing and we need different results. I think people need to understand what the select board's been doing for the last three years, whether it's streets or trees or whatever. What the select board's been doing for the last three years, five years, and seven years, and even 10 years, is keeping the schools fully funded, keeping the Parks and Rec Department funded for youth sports.
Okay, Mark, let's, let's, no, no, let's stick to the topic here.
The topic is, is we're on a fiscal cliff, we're on a fiscal cliff, and we needed to...
Mark, I got, I know, I know.
No, the issue is, we're on fiscal cliff.
Let's stick to this conversation.
And we kept the state.
Mark, Mark, please, please. We're gonna stick to the conversation here, what's on the agenda, okay? All right.
Send out some more letters.
Send out some more letters, what does that mean?
Go ahead, just do your thing.
Okay, well, I'm sorry to hear that you disagreed with that decision. Josh, welcome.
Hi. Great counselor.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so let's get this back on track here. In terms of the direction that you all are looking for us, I mean, I think that some of these capital projects are, are ones that we need to decide on, and I know that in the last couple of conversations, Sean, you've kind of said, you know, I wanna know what the intention of the select board is and how aggressive the select board is going to be with some of these capital projects. And I know that I'm just one out of five votes, but for me, I do want to stay aggressive with our water line replacements and how we are doing that. You know, one of the questions that I sent to you all last week was also what is in the plan for Western Drive, where we are looking at everything in a holistic manner and that we are replacing the water main and then also at the same time, using the opportunity to repave the roads as well. And I know that with the backlog of road pavings that we need to do, this is just another strategy that we can use to catch up, and it makes a whole lot of sense to me for us to do that. When I take a look at the capital projects that I think are priorities, I think Western Drive, and I know that the, you know, the design and engineering for that did, was not completed in time for us to have that at our annual town meeting in May, seems like it's ready now and could potentially, we could have that article in the fall, and, you know, I would be in favor of moving forward with that. I also think, for the reasons that, you know, I asked you, that the Long Meadow Street South End design and engineering, that that is also a high priority. And then, you know, what else you've identified under FY 2026, could you maybe also speak a little bit to why the Eli Road Water Main and Road Repair is identified for FY 2026?
So, yeah, sorry, when I got here, we had, we thought we'd be able to close that road and sort of just separate that water main, and when we did, we found a whole bunch of issues with it, including how the water loops through. So the road has been closed here and there, the water line has been shut off, it's in horrible shape. It blew out, I think, before I started to undermine the whole road. So we've had to repair the road to get it back open, specifically while we're doing work in that area for other water line projects. We weren't able to do those projects without detouring through there. So the line we do need, and we, we need it for the loop down there, and when doing that, we need to rebuild the road because it's catastrophic shape. I would get, I wasn't here when it happened, but the road had undermined from a main blowout there. So it's just one of those, not huge projects, but it's one that needs to get done. I think the other thing that we would need to talk about is, is after you have a discussion about the, the interconnection and the redundant tank, which one or both do you wanna design? That is a several-year project, so even if you move forward now, it's probably five years away from being built.
Okay, and so you'd mentioned that this summer, we would get a presentation on the interconnection and also the redundant?
Yeah, we'll be giving a memo. They were just feasibility studies. I'll see if I can get the consultants to come in and present. It'll be short, though, they're not, they're not in huge depth, but they're feasibility studies that would lead into a further analysis and full design, which would, of course, have more proper costs associated with it at that time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good question about a redundant water tank. Maybe I don't, maybe this has been presented before, but is that another water tank? And where would it be, next to the current water tank?
Exactly, next to the one, it's the only spot in town.
That's right, okay, thanks.
Josh?
It's, I missed a lot of conversation, obviously, but the redundant water tank, it was two years ago when we had the bad drought, and so I know that there's plenty of water out there, but it was, if I, and Andrew, you probably remember this from town meeting, the problem is, if our tank is too low, we can't fight fires.
Right.
And so that would be the reason for it.
Or Springfield, the middle of a high-usage irrigation, Springfield has a blowout on their main or their plant goes down, that would quickly get drawn down and we'd have no water.
So an interconnection wouldn't fix that?
Interconnection, there's two different...
Well, it would fix the Springfield one, but it would still need to pump it up, right?
So, yeah, the inter, so the interconnection would be enough, hopefully, to provide the town with water in emergency. The redundant tank would give additional head pressure and do similar to what an interconnection would do, but maybe without eternity. So it's both, we'll talk about the costs and benefits, there are issues with the interconnection that we'll need to go over at that time, too.
Yeah, that's just, from our talk, I just wanna make sure, like, fire department's involved in that because...
Oh, yes.
That's just, that's a nightmare scenario. I don't wanna that on a decision we made here. We gotta make sure that that never happens.
Just a follow-up for Shandra. So in your mind, when we're thinking about trying to achieve redundancy and a margin of safety, did you, do you in your mind think, we either do the connection or we do the tank or we do both? And if we did both, which is more important as a priority, which would come first?
I think that initially, we need to get one done, which is the interconnection.
That's the more valuable priority.
That would be the one to get done because it has, the tank could be nice and it would be helpful, but I think the priority should be the interconnection.
That makes sense. Mark?
Sean, as you go through this, I think one of the useful numbers will be, you know, how much volume is in the tank? I mean, you can tell them, yeah, but in terms of time, in other words, if Springfield goes out for eight hours, but if they, you know, they'd have to go out for something between here and here for the second tank to be painted, to be useful, because longer than that, even the second tank's not gonna...
Right, so it might be just a day, it might be just the head pressure while we fight a fire and get the interconnection turned on. There's complications, then we can go through all that stuff.
But I think those are the kinds of numbers that would help understand the value of a second tank, because it's not just, you got twice the volume, you have twice the volume, but you might only have two more hours.
And it might be, we just got the numbers from Enfield about what they can provide for us, it might not be that we have enough water to fight a fire when we connect with them, so it might be we'd like to have that second tank there as a reserve, just in case we had pressure during a severing of the water from Springfield, there's, there's complications. It's a, so we should, we'll go through all of that, hopefully, and have it hashed out. We'll have discussions about it, but there'll probably be additional engineering to look at both and then...
Just a follow-up, the initial discussion with Enfield, and it's might have been before you got here, was the hydrant-to-hydrant connection.
Sure.
Are you talking about something far more than that?
Yes, a permanent interconnection, likely underground with a pump.
All right.
So you just go and turn a valve, and then we pursue, but there is chemistry stuff to talk about this.
Of course, and meters.
Oh, yes, but it would go both ways, so we would actually, if they needed water, we would be able to provide them water and then they would make money off them, so.
We can sell Springfield's water to Enfield profit?
Correct, yes.
You got to be shanited, you took it three miles. Okay, anything else, or have we said it all? I think we've probably said it all. All right, thank you all so much, yeah, for coming tonight, and, you know, we'll continue the discussion in our next meeting and vote on rates. In terms of direction, do you feel, all feel like you, or is there anything out there? Any more clarification?
I guess I would like to add, just, it would be helpful for us in order to give you a rate discussion for the next meeting, a couple of things. One, as it was brought up, about fixed meter charges, I'm happy to have it be whatever the board is looking for options. So if we wanna do it based on retained earnings and capital projects, we can base it on that, we can base it on the total amount to be raised, which is what we proposed to you tonight, I think that would be helpful, first off. Second off, I would like some direction on whether or not we want to pursue giving a tiered rate proposal to you, or if we wanna give the fixed rate proposal. Those are the two things that I really need from the board tonight in order for us to continue this discussion truthfully.
And the discount?
Yes.
Because that factors into what we ultimately propose for you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
I'll offer my answers. Ian, I, I think fixed rate, not tiered, that's personal opinion, I, you know, I think the fixed rate versus variable rate, fixed rates, I don't believe the fixed rates can in year one be 100% of capital and building up the, the combination of capital plus building up the stabilization fund. It couldn't be all the stabilization fund, but capital's been around for a long, long time and hasn't been paid out of fixed rate, that would kill us. So I think the split between how much we raise from variable and how much we raise from fix ought to be the decision of the select board, whether it's 50/50 or 60/40 or 90/10, I don't know. But I think that's why I'm suggesting you say, here's how much we need to raise, here's what the capital is, here's how much you're gonna go up in the stabilization fund, you water and sewer commissioners decide what the split should be, how much we should raise from tiered and how much we should raise from fixed. And if that comes back to the select board, I think, then the onus is on us to give you that percentage.
So right now, in the, the way that you're all looking at it, right, is that the capital costs were covered by the variable rates and everything else by the fixed rate?
The new capital cost for the tank and/or interconnection.
Okay. Yep, Andrew?
Well, I just wanted to just bring it all back for a second. So the thing that we are giving you a directive for is, we're kind of pretty much in agreement that we're all agreeing to raise rates significantly, to prioritize capital projects, which presumably hasn't been done so much in the past. So that's pretty much a very important thing that we're, I think we're giving you a strong message, that we're all in agreement. The rest of it is kind of just the method. I personally don't feel strongly whether it's tiered or non-tiered, 200% or 300%, I'm just glad that we're gonna raise the right amount of money that we need or that you guys are telling us you think we need, one way or another. I gave my reasons for thinking concerning, concern that if we did tiered, that, you know, we might not get as much as we want because of behavioral change, but maybe I'm wrong, so it's fine.
Can I ask you one question, if I could? You said fixed rates to cover the capital for the tank or the interconnection?
Not fixed rates, no.
Variable rates.
Right, because these are volumetric projects.
She's suggesting the opposite of what you've often said.
Okay, so, that's what I was trying to clarify, so maybe, and more importantly, are we, is the town in a position to implement any of, either of those projects in FY 2026? Or what percentage of, is it engineer the projects, is it pay, you know, what, what's the cost of developing those or doing whatever we can in 2026 that we wanna roll into the 2026 rates?
Yeah, we're at the design point.
So we're still taking...
So, I mean, and I understand, the design's not 20 bucks, I mean, it's tens of thousands of dollars probably, if not more, but, but we're talking about the design and not the capital per se of a new tank or the capital of the pipes underground.
The capital would be Western Drive that we're looking for.
So it's the capital of Western Drive and the engineering for at least one of those reliable, what I'll call reliability studies?
And the south end tip.
Does that sound like...
And south end. The second tip project in the south end, which is really the medium of, because we have a different south end project than that.
Yeah.
Why would the interconnection or the tank be from variable rates?
So the tank specifically is primarily needed to keep up with the volume of water that we're in demand for.
So we need to tie it to the volume of water we're buying.
Well, no, it's, it's, so, we're planning for the worst-case scenario, which is what we've had happen before, summer, Springfield can't meet our demand, we cannot meet the residents' demand, we have a fire and everyone's irrigating, but we lose pressure in the tank and...
Oh, no, I understand.
Yeah, so the idea is, the redundant tank is to meet that high-volume need.
Okay. Well, I, I will have to go back and watch our meeting to catch up on the discussion, but just generally coming into it and from the little I've heard so far, I am, I'm generally opposed to a tiered rate. I think that non-tiered is the way to go. And I did have a question, I saw the number of exemptions we could offer is pretty low. I was, I'm sure you discussed it, why, why is that?
Sure, so in our recommendation, we started with just the baseline of mirroring the discounts that are already offered for stormwater, which is 30%. So then we updated in some scenarios to a 50% or 100% discount on those fixed charges, just as a baseline for conversation, just to match what stormwater is already. If you guys wanna expand on that, you wanna do a 65-plus discount or, you know, whatever else, you know, you wanna discuss, we can run those scenarios, it just has an impact on the rate.
Oh, sure, yeah, but I think, but it was 120 people, why is it that few? That's just the category you have now, it's...
That, so those are the ones that qualify for the blind elderly or veteran exemption through the assessor's office. So this is a common model in communities so that you're not sharing financial information amongst all the departments, so only the assessors gets that information, they just send a list of qualifying households to DPW.
Okay.
And I think that probably Andrew articulated where I'm also at. I, I'm, I, I think it seems like the select board is behind moving forward with capital projects, the ones that we talked about, and I am on board with that, and I am, to be And I am, to be honest, still undecided about whether to do a single rate or a combined rate. So I know for me personally, I think at our next meeting, I would like to still see examples of both options because I would just also still like some more time to think about that and ask questions. And then in terms of the discounts, it seems like the easiest way for us right now is to pull them over from the same way that we do stormwater. I don't know about what all would go into exactly expanding that number, but maybe if we could start there as a way to kind of provide the models or projections for our next meeting, would make sense to me. But folks, want to speak differently to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna jump ahead to the stormwater system. I think that my understanding of stormwater system is, we've established through long-term policies what percentage of stormwater is gonna be paid through and what percentage is gonna be. And so I hope you know the number of ERUs that are there. So that was your, so take stormwater off the topic here. It is what it's gonna be.
Well, it's on the topic because you still need to vote the rate.
We need to vote the rate, but I don't think it's up for discussion. The process is pretty straightforward, right? I mean, the stormwater fund has sufficient money to pay for what it needs to pay for. Where are we bonded anyway out of the town?
So just quickly there, so the rate that we proposed to you tonight is following your policy.
Right.
I do not believe that we agree that it's sufficient to run what needs to be run, but that's not what we're looking to discuss with you tonight.
But the policy isn't sufficient to fund the stormwater department anyway. It's only, I don't know what we're at now, but probably...
63 percent?
Yeah, okay, so we're only...
But that's not with many capital projects. So when the design's done for the culverts that we have started, and we have another one fail, another bank fail, it's gonna be another discussion about what to do with those rates.
All right, anything else?
Just sort of clear on the discount piece, because that is important. So I think if, I guess a directive would be if we could get a couple options outside of just the 129 that Josh had mentioned of those individuals. Like, how, what can we look at? What could be proposed for a larger group?
Yeah, do you have an idea on like what group, how you'd want us to break out those groups?
I mean, it could be age, I think, maybe per household, how many people are in the household, if it's just a one individual living in the house.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, appreciate it. All right, and then we're into correspondence. Any comments on correspondence? Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, we got one from Sokol Coffee Roasters. Mike, I emailed them back today, and I said they should talk to you.
Perfect.
But I asked them just for some locations like we've done for poor things in the past.
That's consistent with what we told them when they came to the office as well. I just said the process would be to reach out to the select board, and then we'll be in touch with further...
Yeah, I would love to see a lot more applications like this. Do we, is there information out there on the webpage on what to do? Or is it just talk to Mike?
Typically, they'll come through Health Department first, and they'll be getting their, you know, food permits or their huck or peddler's licenses. And then it'll come up from there.